Four August, Manistee City Council Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the agenda to add Item Eight, New Business I, allowing action by City Council on this additional item. The new business is election of Mayor for the City of Manistee to fill the unexpired term. Under Section 2.4 of the Charter, it states, "The council, as so reconstructed, shall select from among its members a mayor to fill the unexpired term. If necessary, the council shall also elect a mayor pro tem." At this time, the council can take action to nominate and elect a mayor for the City of Manistee to fill the unexpired term, and if necessary, a mayor pro tem. So at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, thank you. Any discussion? Heather, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. At this time, citizens have an opportunity to comment on agenda-related items. Citizens will be recognized by the mayor for comment and are limited to five minutes. Please state your name and address and sign a register. So do we have any citizens who would like to comment on agenda-related items? Yes, ma'am. Please.
Yep, just write your name and address.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Clark. I'm the Family Services Director for Echo His Love. I'm also the Director of the Safe Harbor of Manistee. And do you need my address at all? Okay, yes. I live at 233 Second Avenue. I just quickly wanted to say that having Safe Harbor at one location during the winter of 2020-2021 season ended, it enabled Echo to provide a sanitized and safe place for all of our homeless guests in Manistee. We served a total of 28, which was 19 men and nine women, and six guests returned from previous seasons, but 22 were new to our facility. Out of the 22, 14 of them expressed that this was their first year of homelessness, experiencing homelessness. We had 107 volunteers from 11 different churches, as well as partners in the community and businesses helping us to run the facility throughout the season. At the close of the season on April 2nd, we had 11 of our guests found stable housing, seven reunited with family, five moved out of the county and their whereabouts are currently unknown, two entered our summer tents ministry, one moved in with a friend, one relocated to a shelter in another community, and sadly, one passed away to non-COVID-related illness. Echo His Love wishes at this time just to express our gratitude for approving us last year to keep it at one location, and we also would like to express that because of that, we were able to keep 28 people sheltered throughout the season, and we thank you again for the consideration to allow us to keep the doors open again at one location this season. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments on agenda-related items? Yes?
Hi, I'm Joyce Reed, and I live at 1778th Street. And I've been working with Safe Harbor now for about five years, and I work through Faith Covenant Church. Having it in one place made it so much easier than moving every week to a different building. We were able to keep it cleaner. The guests knew where we were all the time. They, we didn't have to worry about putting up signs and say, "Go here, go here, go here." We were able, we've always been able to develop a relationship with our guests. We didn't have any incidences where we've had to contact the police. We, it was a good winter. Not one of our volunteers, not one of our guests got sick through the whole season. So I think that they did a really good job keeping it open, and it would be really nice if we could keep it in one place again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens on agenda-related items comments? Last call. Close public comments. Consent Agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the Consent Agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine manners. Prior to approval of the Consent Agenda, any member of council may have an item from the Consent Agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent to end, excuse me. Consent Agenda items include: Approval of Minutes, Cash Balances, Revenue and Expenses, Notification Regarding Next Work Session, Consideration of Authorizing a Change in the Standard Lighting Contract with Consumer Energy. At this time, council can take action to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Are there any council member who would like to remove any items? If not, please take the vote.
We need a, a motion.
Motion?
We need a motion.
Oh, a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Second.
Was the second from Linda or from Erin?
Erin.
Erin. That's what I thought. Thank you. Um, all right. Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New Business. Consideration of Ordinance 21-16, Payment in Lieu of Taxes for Housing. Reed's Park Village Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership has proposed renovations to its Reed's Park Apartment Complex. It has requested the adoption of a Payment in Lieu of Taxes ordinance that provides for a 2% pilot. It is also proposing additional payment under the Municipal Service Agreement and a road resurfacing agreement, which will be considered separately by council. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If the ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce Ordinance 21-16, Payment in Lieu of Taxes for Housing. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski, I do have Mr. Hollander here. If there's any questions that council has, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Hollander?
I don't. I heard him in his last presentation. I understood what he had to say, and I think I'm in a pretty good spot personally, so.
Okay. If no further discussion?
I, I'm just gonna ask, when is work gonna begin if we approve this?
My name is Joe Hollander, Hollander Development. Probably no earlier than next spring.
Okay.
That's the best I can say. I mean, hopefully, it would be next spring, but I don't think it would be any earlier than that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Heather, please take the vote.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of a Municipal Service Agreement for the renovation of Reed's Park Apartments. Reed's, Reed's Park Village Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership has proposed renovations to its Reed's Park Apartment Complex. It is proposing a Municipal Service Agreement in addition to a Payment in Lieu of Taxes and road resurfacing agreement. The agreement provides for a payment to the city of $200 per unit per year. The first payment would be $9,600 and is subject to a 3% annual escalator. At this time, council could take action to approve a Municipal Service Agreement and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion? Second? Any discussion? No discussion? Please take the vote.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of a Road Resurface Agreement for the renovation of Reed's Park Apartments. Reed's Park Village Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership has proposed renovations to its Reed's Park Apartment Complex. It is proposing a road resurface agreement in addition to a 2% pilot and a Municipal Service Agreement. The agreement provides for a $200,000 payment to the city to assist in the resurfacing of city streets as identified in the agreement. At this time, city council could take action to approve a road resurface agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
A second? Any discussion?
I do. What's the, what's the total cost and what streets are gonna get reconstructed? And at what level? Are they gonna be milled and filled, or how deep they're gonna go, Jeff?
So this, um, this agreement works really nicely with the city's transportation improvement plan. In 2023, um, the plan calls for reconstruction of Kajusko Street, which is commonly known as Hospital Hill. So it's the road that goes up the hill. Care Center Drive intersects with that, so it should impact a, a portion of Care Center Drive, and those may need to be realigned. And then it connects up to, uh, what would be 14th Street, um, to Maywood, and then Maywood up to 15th Street. So basically, it's Hospital Hill up around the corner, uh, past the water tower. And, uh, what we anticipate is full reconstruction of that. The, um, I believe it was an 800, $800,000 to $900,000 project in our transportation improvement plan, and we've been searching for grant money and have not been successful for that to this point. So, um, the $200,000, uh, agreement with Hollander Development will help us get that work done.
Does that reconstruction involve curbs and gutter and sidewalks?
It will include curb and gutter and new roadway. Uh, there hasn't been discussion on sidewalks, um, and obviously, we haven't been in design for that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, can I ask you, have you ever gone back, I mean, from the olden days when I was a young kid? There, people always said that the hospital, at that time, put that road in. Is that the city road or is that a house?
That's a great question. And when, uh, Best Drug Rehab purchased that property, and when the, uh, construction of the grocery store was happening, they were trying to figure out the common boundary lines and properties there. And I had heard the same thing my whole life. Uh, that was always the rumor, was that that was not a public street, but was actually on property that was owned by, uh, by the hospital. Um, so, from our research, we have determined that it actually has city right-of-way. Um, so at some point, that must have been deeded to the city, and it does show on the Act 51 maps as a city street. So clearly, the city has ownership, and, uh, that is listed as a major street.
Okay.
Uh, I got a question. Why, why are you doing that road right now? Like, it doesn't seem like it's in that bad of shape versus some other ones.
Um, it is in horrible shape.
It is.
And it is, uh, it's just been something that's been in, in our transportation improvement plan probably for, Sean, three years, I think.
Yeah, but you're at the worst major street.
So that and the A Street that's under reconstruction right now are two of the worst.
Which street is, are you doing again?
Kajusko going up that big hill, that big loop on 12th Street.
In front of it, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, nevermind. Shut my mouth.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm, I'm good.
It'll, it'll.
I was on the wrong road. I'm directionally challenged, so.
Anybody else?
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, could you please take the vote?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a temporary activity permit to Echo His Love to allow for the sheltering of the homeless population in the City of Manistee at one location throughout the winter. Echo His Love is requesting a temporary activity permit to allow for the sheltering of the Manistee homeless population at one location throughout the winter. Temporary activity permits must be approved by city council. This would allow for those experiencing homelessness in the City of Manistee to be sheltered for a five-month period from November 6, 2021, until April 2, 2022, at Echo His Love's main campus located at 252 Michael Street. Typically, the homeless are sheltered by rotating churches throughout the winter, but due to COVID-19, this cannot take place in this capacity this year. Temporary activity permits are allowed via the zoning ordinance Section 522 and Section 507. At this time, the council could take action to approve a temporary activity permit to Echo His Love and to allow for the sheltering of the homeless population in Manistee at one location throughout the winter. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second. Discussion?
Um, I have a question, and it's probably more for Chief Glass. Has there been any trouble at that location? Uh, noise complaints or trash problems or anything that would upset the neighborhood?
I'm not aware of any major incidents at, at, at this location at all. I think at one point, we had a neighbor that was bothered or concerned with the traffic associated with Echo His Love and, and that events. But as far as noise complaints, crime, major calls, I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
Did you have a, did you have a complaint last year of some marijuana up there or some guy being searched?
There, I'm not, I don't, I'm not aware of that. I can get that information for you, but I'm not aware of that tonight. Uh, there was some information about possible drug activity in the parking lot nearby.
Okay, okay.
Um, as far as the outcome of that, I don't know, but I can look that up for you. Back to you, Anna.
This question is not for Josh Bass, this is for Echo With Love. Um, I had one citizen complain that we're coming back to the same place twice, and he was upset, and he felt he was, his property values were going downhill, and he was hoping that maybe he could find a different church this year or maybe next year. Is that something you've ever considered? Or is this, uh, gonna be the same place all the time year after year?
Hello again. The, we also received a message from the same, uh, neighbor. I also received a letter from another neighbor who actually gave us a glowing review that I believe she sent to the city council as well. Um, we are hoping that if it, if it's possible and it works out, we'll be able to continue to keep it in one location. But we man it, we make sure, we work very well with our police department. And as far as being searched with the marijuana, that was actually on the church property across the road. It had nothing to actually do with Echo itself or Safe Harbor. Um, as far as that, that citizen, we have sent him letters. I even sent him a nice card, trying to explain to him that if there's a problem, please feel free to speak to me. If it's about one of our guests that are there, I will make sure that is handled immediately. Because, uh, like I said, 28 people, it's more important to me than, than, uh, uh, you know, one person I may have to take out of a program than the other 27 that are there.
I, uh, I actually have a comment about that email, um, that you received, the letter that we all received. Um, they stated that they're very disappointed in this town, that you have no care for our residents. You know, that's, that's kind of a crappy statement because nobody wakes up and says, "Hey, let me be homeless for the day" and find some.
Thank you.
Like, that's, you know, I don't know where decent human decency went. I, I would like to have, to find like a permanent place, so they're not all moved around through the city. So I don't know if you have, like, agencies that are helping you, like, try to find something that's more permanent. Um, I did read an article where they have, like, these, I don't even know what they are, like, little kind of like pod things that you can put on, like, a vacant land or a parcel, where you just have, like, um, so, somebody might, like, like you do on. Yes, yes. Um, so I don't know if that's something that you looked into, but, I mean, I don't. It's no different than if you get a neighbor that's, you know, loud and has parties all the time, so they're okay because they're a homeowner? I mean, that's kind of a.
Well, we went through this problem a year discussing the same thing. And, you know, I've been over there, and I don't see any problem.
Yeah, I don't understand it. If there's, I mean, it looks exactly the same as it has for years. There's not people hanging out of the building and garbage everywhere and.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Heather, would you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Local Revenue Sharing Board Appointment to Fill Vacancy. At this time, the mayor pro tem could take action to make an appointment to the Local Revenue Sharing Board. I would like to appoint Michael Schamanski. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Vote, please.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. City Clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Historic District Commission, Peg Commission, and Tree Commission. Marial appointments and manager appointments require a motion second and council vote support. Following applications have been received. The Downtown Development Authority won vacancy for an at-large member, unexpired term ending June 30, 2022. The City Manager Appointment. And who would you like to appoint?
At this time, I'd like to appoint Thad and Taylor to the DDA vacancy.
That's Thad Taylor at 581 8th Street. At this time, interim city manager and council could take action to make the appointment as noted. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I've been thinking about this a lot. Um, there are other types of agencies or, or, uh, school districts, for example, or companies, other municipalities, that, um, actually have in their ordinances that a retired or a city manager, I'm just, I have to use that as an example because that's what we're talking about. Um, there's a moratorium, like, a six-month wait period before they can sign on to, um, commissions. And I do think, I, I suppose I didn't really have a big problem with the historical commission that he applied for, that we already approved. But when I think about the DDA and I think about our new, um, city manager coming in and wondering how that's going to play out, I would just prefer, well, first of all, I think we should talk about maybe setting aside a 90-day or a six-month moratorium before people can apply for these. Because I do think it, it, it may be, you know, his spirit may be good, but it may undermine the ability of the new person to get fully acclimated. So that's why I'm, I'm not quite in favor of it.
Any other discussion? City Attorney, do we have anything that would, um, um, make him not eligible for this position?
Nothing that would bar it at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, please take the vote.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
No.
Councilmember Grabowski.
No.
Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Schamanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion failed.
Consideration of an appointment to fill the vacant Third District Council seat. Section 2-6 of the City Charter states, "Any vacancy occurring in the office of council person shall be filled within 30 days by appointment of a resident of the district involved by a majority vote of the remaining council persons." Historically, council has followed the practice of advertising and interviewing candidates for the council vacancy. The city clerk has taken action to advertise the council vacancies. We have received three vacancies, uh, three applications for the following vacancies. Mr. Bruce Allen, 94 Pine Street. Uh, 74 Pine Street. Robert Honkel, 432 Cedar Street. And Ms. Cindy Lundberg of 242 Lighthouse Circle. At this time, I would like to invite all three candidates to come up and basically, uh, give us, uh, a five minutes or less of why they would like to be the city council representative for Third District. And we'll start with, uh, Mr. Allen.
Evening. My wife and I moved here, uh, a couple of years ago. Uh, we were looking for a place on, uh, the Michigan shoreline and went to, you know, 20 different communities. Uh, Manistee is a, a pretty special place. And, you know, it's very pretty, uh, and, uh, you know, we're, we're on the shore, and, you know, we've got a national forest, stones throw away. But the thing that's really striking about this community is, uh, what it can do when it puts its mind to it. You know, there's the Riverwalk and the Vogue Theater and, uh, the Ramsdale. There was actually an article about the Vogue Theater that got my wife's attention, that this town of 6,000 people got together this town of six thousand people got together and, you know, restored the Vogue Vogue Theater, and it's run by volunteers. Uh you know, it's pretty extraordinary. There's also some things that that, you know, I've sort of discovered about the community, having lived here for for a little while now. The HSCB, uh you know, the the um the the community groups that collaborate and solve community problems here is unusual and extraordinary. And I'm a sucker for that kind of thing. Uh my background is in public affairs. Self self-governance is uh a beautiful and magical thing. So I I think Manistee's going in the right direction. I think we're gonna face a lot of changes, uh you know, over the next few years. And how we change and the way that we do it and making sure that nobody gets left behind is very important to me. So that's why.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Honkel.
Good evening. I've lived in Manistee my whole life. Graduated from Manistee High School. Right out of high school, I joined the United States Navy. I served a few months down at Norfolk, Virginia, and then I was transferred to Naval Air Station Roosevelt's Roads in Puerto Rico. And I said, I served there for the rest of my career. I was in security. Uh I graduated from Manistee High School, like I said. After discharged, I came back to to Manistee, worked various jobs for a few years. And then I was recruited by the former chief, John Willett, to put my application in for the Police Department as I was in security at when I was in the Navy. Uh John subsequently uh made a promoted me to Detective Sergeant for Region Ten Detectives. I worked in the detective unit for approximately nine years. After that, he made a recommendation to the city manager and the and the council to promote me to Chief of Police and Director of Public Safety. I worked for approximately ten years in that position, and I retired after thirty-four years with the Police Department. After retirement, I applied for the City Planning Commission. I was appointed at the Planning Commission for, I served on that for two years. And after two years, I ran for City Council, and I was on the council for council for fourteen years. Uh the only reason I didn't reapply, I had some medical problems at the time, and I didn't feel that I should uh continue any further. I'm very familiar with the budgeting process for the for the city. I worked in budgeting for the police and fire for for quite a few years. And I also worked and helped the budget in when I was on the city council. I, the reason I applied is I think everybody should take a chance and and volunteer if something comes up to either for the for the council or other civic organizations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lundberg.
Hello. I'm Cindy Lundberg. And first, I want to thank you all for your efforts for our community. I really appreciate all that you guys do to help us along. And I also appreciate the opportunity to be up here in front of you today. Um I believe Manistee, as the other candidate said, is up for some really exciting changes, and I think it's really a great thing. We do need a really strong council to help move that along and keep the city moving forward. And so that's why I'm very interested in being a part of this. And I trust that you guys will make the best decision that needs to be made tonight, whatever that may be. So I I commend you for that that piece of it. Now, I do know that I'm the new face in the crowd amongst these other folks. So I want to tell you a little bit about me. I grew up in Manistee. I attended Jefferson Elementary, and then I went on to Junior High in the condemned building that is about to be torn down. And high school was the Kennedy School now. I then went off to college. I went to Ferris State University. Go Bulldogs. Then I left Michigan for years. And three years ago, the universe kind of aligned, and I found the perfect opportunity to come back and live here in this beautiful city. Uh I've come back with a new set of eyes. I'm not the young little teenager that I was when I moved along, and I'm really ready to get involved. So I'm excited about that. I'm also a mother of three beautiful, amazing daughters. They're all grown up now. But being a mother has been the toughest and most rewarding thing I've ever done. I also thrive in new environments where I'm challenged, and I'm not afraid to go all in when there's an opportunity that comes our way. Just ask my family and friends. I had brought my resume to you. It should be in front of you somewhere over there, but I'm just gonna highlight a few things from my resume. Um I do have a master's degree. It even said in the paper in educational leadership. And I spent several years out in California as an administrator in the school district out there. And I've been told that I'm kind of a natural leader. I don't really know about that. But what I do know is that I always migrate towards leadership roles. And sometimes I'm the one seeking the roles, and sometimes others are recognizing in me leadership and are asking me to move into a role like that. So maybe there's something to that. In my resume, you will notice that I use the word collaboration a lot. I I am a true believer in collaboration, the power of collaboration. And I even wrote my thesis on collaboration. So it is a big deal to me. And I really believe that everyone, everyone, has something to bring to the table. And together, I really believe that we are better. And next point, perspective. So I think I bring a different perspective to the table here. Um I'm currently serving the families of our community as a teacher in the Manistee area public schools. I work with them every day. I learn lots about what they need and what the families are struggling with. Um and having left Manistee and returned to Manistee, I remember what Manistee was like long ago. And I remember and and hopeful and joyful for what Manistee can be in the future. And I've been here for three years. And in those three years' time, I've been elected to the Lighthouse Landings Condominium Association Board. I volunteer at the Vogue. I volunteer at community events. I joined the MAPS leadership team. And on a personal note, I started a book study with the friends around me. And I I would really be honored to serve our great community as a member on the city council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. At this time, council can could consider an appointment to the third district council seat.
There's a misprint in there, yes.
Do I have a motion?
No.
For one of the three candidates?
We need nominations.
Oh, nomination, excuse me, a nomination for one of the three candidates.
Well, I know who I would like to nominate, but I I do want to, are we gonna have time for discussion beforehand, or do we just go ahead?
Yes, we will, we will have the nominations, then there will be an opportunity for discussions, and then the vote.
So you take more than one nomination then, or are we?
No, you're you're gonna be nominating all the candidates that are of interest. So if you have different candidates, you could have three or four or five nominations, whatever they are. And then you'll vote for the individual that you want to vote for.
Well, I'd like to, I I've had a chance to talk to Cindy, and I've always talked to Bob Warren Cole, and I and I haven't talked to Mr. Allen a lot, but I have watched some videos with him serving on the DDA. I just personally, since it's my vote that I'm worried about on city council for this, I, my personal opinion on serving as a city council member is, we have to listen to what our constituents want, and we have to be responsive to them. It's not, it's not always letting the city tell us what they think we need to do as much as we absolutely need to be driving that cart and setting the setting the goals and working in collaboration with the city. But I do think that for me, having almost six years on city council, what I've learned most of all is that I don't dodge any phone calls. I don't dodge any emails. I answer them all. So I think it's important to always keep that in mind, who you're serving. And I just feel that Cindy has a great background in our community, and she came back. And she she didn't mention California per se in her presentation, but she was in a lot of major cities in California. I know she's got some ideas about how to improve the boardwalk. And I I think she's very invested. So my nomination is for Cindy Lundberg.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. You don't need a second on nomination. It just a nomination, and if somebody else has a nomination, they can do theirs.
Any other nominations? If there are no other nominations?
So we need a motion to close the nominations, a motion and a second to close the nominations.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and a second? A vote on the closing the nominations?
A little bit of discussion while we do that? Is there a discussion happening in there?
Yes.
With a motion?
Yes.
I just want to say, all three of these people that that applied are awesome. I appreciate everybody who put their name in there. I, it's a tough decision. It's not really, until you hire somebody, you pull them to work, and find them as a city council member, you don't know how good they're gonna be. But I I really think that that Bob, who's done a great job in the past, would do fine. And I'm sure that Mr. Allen would do a great job, too. And I think he's probably tied in with the the volunteers on Riverwalk, right? Somewhere there? Looks like it anyway, based on the crowd back there. But I am, I'm hoping that that Cindy, if she's elected to the council, also would be engaged with that group, too, and be supportive of them. And I just, I think all three of you, I appreciate all these people making an attempt to apply for city council. Thank you very much.
No, it does make a hard decision, because I worked with Bob for a long time. And, you know, he was my chief. I was a detective, finally. And, you know, I like everybody. I'm glad people are running, but like.
I was a little surprised. Were you? There was three?
Yeah.
Why are you speaking up?
I mean, my 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 district was unrepresented. I was a write-in. So I'm thrilled to death that three people applied for the spot.
Yep. So I'm appreciative of everybody running, and we'll have to make who we want, and that's all that's true. Thank you.
So vote on closing the nominations?
Okay, Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. And now I'll do.
Do we have a a vote?
Yes. So I'll call each person, and you'll state the name.
Name of the person that you would like to vote for.
Councilmember Bachman.
Cindy Lundberg.
Councilmember Beaton.
Cindy Lundberg.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Cindy Lundberg.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Cindy Lundberg.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Cindy Lundberg.
And Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Cindy Lundberg.
So Councilmember Lundberg? Would you?
Lundberg, at this time, please come forward. At this time, the city clerk, Heather Pelfrey, will administer the oath of office for the term expiring November twenty-twenty-two.
I, Cindy Lundberg, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of this office of city council, third district, and and for the city of Manistee, state of Michigan, according to the best of my ability.
Yes. Oh, you stay up there. Oh, yep, go ahead.
Election of Mayor for the city of Manistee to fill the unexpired term. Under section two point four of the charter, it states, "The council is so reconstructed shall select from among its members a mayor to fill the unexpired term. If necessary, the council shall also elect a mayor pro tem. At this time, council could take action to nominate and elect a mayor for the city of Manistee to fill the unexpired term, and if necessary, a mayor pro tem." At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Heather Pelfrey.
So I will open the floor for nominations for mayor.
I nominate Ms. Shemansky.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Beaton.
Okay, are there any other nominations? I will take a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and a vote to close. Councilmember Bachman.
Ms. Shemansky.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote, first of all, to close the nominations.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Uh Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. And now I will take a vote for on the nominations. And we have a nomination for Mayor Protem Shemansky and also for Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Bachman.
I think I tipped my hand, but Ms. Shemansky.
Councilmember Beaton.
Beaton.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Beaton.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Beaton.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Shemansky.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Beaton.
And Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Beaton.
Okay. Um council has elected Linda Beaton to mayor.
Thank you.
All right. And so we don't need to go forward. We're all set then. Okay.
Yeah.
We are on the agenda. I think we are on to notices and communications and announcements.
Do we have to do a mayor pro tem?
No.
No.
We don't need to do that now, because.
Didn't get it.
So I think we're gonna hear a report from Economic Development and Downtown Development Authority.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. It is time for our quarterly report on economic development. And you have been receiving monthly reports and recently received a quarterly economic development report. We have summed it up with this infographic that you see on your screen, so we can go quickly through and provide an update. We're seeing a uh an increased pace of contacts. So things are picking up. And part of that work is is focused on our priority projects, which you see on the screen. We also have picked up an increased pace. picked up an increased pace in new business creation. So we're, we're seeing those contacts increase. Developers are also working on their projects, which is creating additional work for the program. They are picking up the phone and calling the chamber as the first point of contact as the, as we are designed to do with the program. So we're seeing that increase. And you see that we have a 276% increase in the number of contacts from the previous quarter for the second quarter. So it's a very positive thing. We have been working on trying to identify some of the obstacles to creation of new businesses. As I've stated in past reports, the, part of the problem is finding places for them to locate. So we spent a good deal of time in the past several months looking at available storefronts, identifying owners and obstacles that they might have for, for leasing out their spaces and creating a more vibrant downtown and a more vibrant community in all parts of our community. So this work is in progress. We have sent out a survey to building owners. We've had 11 responses so far. And the bottom line for us is, is that even though there's only a few spaces that are, are actually for lease at the moment, we have a minimum four of business owners who are looking actively to locate in the downtown area. So that is a kind of an upshot of where we're at with, with the job creation. We also have been very active in housing projects. We have eight that we saw in the, the quarter. People that we have contacts that we worked with, assisting them through various processes, permits, or, or fielding questions. So we remain very active in that front, as we need to be, because it's a very important need, not only just for new people coming into town, but for, for our business sector as well. We hear repeatedly that, from our manufacturers, that it's very difficult to get and recruit talent to their jobs because of the lack of housing options for them. So this is a very positive thing that we have eight. I can tell you in recent days, there's been even, even more. So we'll continue to do that work. So that's the upshot for the quarter. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Could you describe some of the housing obstacles that you've hit and how many realtors you've worked with, just to give us an idea of collaboration among all of the realtors in the community?
That's a great question, mayor. And the, we have worked on building more direct lines of communication with the leaders of, and the brokerages, with the businesses. We put together a good outline of things we'd like to communicate and hear from them on, in terms of collaboration. We have attempted to put together a meeting, which understandably, everyone was very busy with. And so we've reached out and have, have been meeting individually and talking to them when we can. We'll try again when things cool off a little bit, literally and figuratively, in the fall, and try to sit down and have it, have that meeting again to work on collaboration of what that sector needs and what those businesses need. So we would like to get that information and be able to work with them and move forward.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Is that why, Mark, we're still waiting on the Gateway Project to give the city more stuff?
No, that has a, a different, a different set of things that we're working through. And we will see progress on that with the brownfield grant and loan. So things will start to be demolished in the coming months. We will have some brownfield remediation, so cleaning up any environmental contamination at the sites. That will be moving forward. And I would, I can tell you that part of the contacts, the increase in contacts over the past quarter, has been working on that project. So things are moving forward. We just haven't had a lot of public news to report yet beyond the brownfield grant and loan program. But we've been working diligently to move that forward, and hopefully we'll have some, some news that will be ready to print in the coming months.
I don't want to see him sit there with no buildings on, and people come by and say...
Yeah. One of the things that I'll, I'll just point out that we've, we've been interested in working with the developers on is putting up some, some screens that would have some positive messaging on what's coming and turn left by local. So that's being worked on and, but we haven't seen any of that. But that will, I'm kind of breaking a little bit of news, but hopefully that will be happening at some point in the future.
Good.
But that's a minimal amount, though, councilmember. We've got a lot more work to do and heavy lifting to do.
Hi.
Hello.
Might as well start off asking a question. Could you, I don't know if I missed it, or I was just not listening well enough, but the first part where you're talking about the contacts, the environmental development contacts, when you say contacts, does that just mean people interested in doing something? Or what do you mean by contacts? Could you help me understand that?
That's a great question. And we do gloss over that. So it's a great question to ask. If we have any outreach from a developer, or a new business owner, or a referral that we make to the Small Business Development Center, or, or other, other sorts of, of meaningful work.
Okay.
So if we're, if we're emailing and, and working through and giving them information, we count that as a contact.
Okay.
And so in the previous quarter, we had a great deal of outreach to our local business community. Every time we, we had a, a solid contact where we talked about an issue or talked about their business, we count that as a contact. And so that we can keep our metrics clear for, for the different supporters of the economic development program. The city is one, county, and then the private sector. We have different, different contractual arrangements for tracking those metrics. And so what you see there with the graph is we track the downtown development, downtown district. There's a contract with the DDA. We also track for the city. We separate those two out. So those are, are not, they're additive, not together. And then we also track what we do outside in the county, even though everything's included in the county. If it's outside the City of Manistee, we track that differently.
I'm curious, do you then track from those contacts, how many come to something, building, something more?
We should be doing that. And I think that when we start to go back and look at annual reports, we'll try to make that attempt to track those metrics in that way. Some of the things that we'd like to do is talk about the amount of investment, the millions of dollars that we've been able to attract, the number of jobs we've been able to attract. So those are some of the metrics we'd like to get to. But we, we still have a lot of work to get there, and we have a lot of work to have that kind of impact. So, you know, as Councilmember Grabowski points out, we don't have a shovel in the ground at the Gateway Project. So we need to be, be patient with that. Some of these projects take three to five years, but those are the metrics we'd like to be able to talk about in the future.
Right, because those contacts make you be encouraged, but may or may not result in anything, correct?
Right. One thing I can point out, though, too, is that when you look at the new businesses, referrals, and contracts list on this particular sheet, you can see some of the ones that are, are open or about to open. You know, there's, there's some positive things there that we've been working with those businesses. And we are getting some of those open. And Princess of Luddington, obviously, and Downtown Delights. So, so those are all positive.
Yep. Thanks.
I just wanted to touch on something that, or ask a question on something that Linda said. If there is vacant, commercial buildings for sale that have been for sale for quite some time, do you reach out to those agents that have it listed and ask them, you know, if they need help, or what's going on, or, like, all commercial buildings in the county?
No.
Just downtown?
No. It depends on if we can make it in a priority area. So downtown's obviously a priority area, because we, we want to see a vibrant downtown that helps the community and, and creates more bang for the buck. We, we also focus along the US 31 corridor. And if we have opportunities in Anachrona, Bear Lake, et cetera, we, we do that. But in terms of outreach to, to the realtors, we haven't taken on that program as robustly as you might, might have indicated. Typically, we'll have realtors talk to us about opportunities.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
What's going on with the old Stacy's Flowers Shop in the First Street Tavern area?
That's a good question. It's on our list of outreach to try to figure out what's going on with that. We've driven past that and have seen, and had an indication of bed and breakfast, or some sort of business might be there. But we haven't made contact with any building owners.
What building is that?
Where Stacy's Flowers used to be.
On First Street.
Right, to the east of US 31. Yeah. So we haven't made contact on that. I will tell you that in doing the research for River Street, it took me a good deal, a good number of hours working through, trying to contact and locate all the people behind the LLCs that are there. So it does take a little bit of work, but I haven't made an attempt on that one yet.
I think that a good starting point would be to reach out to the agent that sold it, because they could give you that information very easily.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Miller? Thank you very much for your report.
You.
We now move on to concerns and comments by the public.
We have one more. We have the DDA also.
We have the DDA. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to ignore you. She's new.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening, mayor, councilmembers. Just wanted to give you a quick update, since the chamber took over the DDA about 10 months ago. Everything is super excited, exciting to me. I think this is just such a neat time to be involved with this. I think having the chamber be involved, not only on the economic development end and the DDA end, and just doing the chamber work, it ties it all together nicely. We, we really use a team approach. Each of us have our own specialties within the chamber. Mark definitely takes the lead on economic development, but we all field calls with that, depending on where the business is at, what type of business it is. We might do referrals if they're just in the very beginning stage. They might have thought of a concept, "Oh, I want to do this." But they, they just don't have a business plan and things like that. So we try to do a lot of referrals on that stuff altogether. And it takes quite a few people to man some of those calls and stuff. Mark takes the lead on lots and lots of projects for economic development. But as a team, we all kind of pitch in and create forums and, like, tracking downtown buildings. Mark and I work directly on that. It's nice to have direct access to him and him to me, so that we can answer some of those questions. So lately, I have taken the lead now on the DDA. So if you do have DDA questions, if you don't want to go to a DDA board member, you're welcome to come to me. And I'm happy to give any contact information if you don't have that. Objectives for the DDA promote economic growth and development, identify, or having an identifiable downtown, and then strengthen the business and the community ownership of where we live. I think in the 10 months that we've been doing it, the big thing is, you know, learning, figuring out, how does the DDA operate? What does it look like? Where are the resources? What can we do? How do, you know, how, when, when do we work with council? How do we do that? How do you, you know, help us, help guide us, and things like that. And then working with the city staff, they've been absolutely amazing in helping us put those pieces together. So, great. So we've, we've tried to streamline processes to make them not so clunky, is my, one of my favorite words. We've, we've bid out for accounting services. We completed the annual audit last year, and also completed the budget, which you approved for us. Thank you. Did professional training. Some of the downtown, or Michigan downtown has conferences. That's where I actually learned about some of the cool outdoor platforms that other cities were doing. So that was really kind of a, you know, light bulb. "Oh, look at all these cool things. Look at how fast they did it." Getting those connections to reach out to other cities to say, "Hey, how did you do this? Who did you work with?" Trying to figure out, "Oh, what are you, what do your signs look like? What does that, how can we utilize that? How can we make it better? And how can we make immediate differences here in Manistee?" So the outdoor dining, thank you so much for giving, giving us those two parking spaces to the restaurants. And we just took your vision and, and just put the new platforms out with the flowers. And we're seeing lots of use. I hope you guys have all used them and enjoyed them to, you know, have a glass of wine, or lunch, or dinner, or something. And then the social district, that was a big thing. You guys were all very supportive of that. And so we, we just went right to work. The DDA board was very supportive of that. And so we just kind of took that and put all the pieces together to make that happen before the Fourth of July. So exciting. And then communication. We really want to get the communication with all of the downtown businesses. We want to increase that. So we sent out the first newsletter, and I hope you all receive that as well. Merchant meetings are going on monthly. They were biweekly all through COVID, and now we've, went back to monthly. They're, they're a tad bit busy right now with staffing shortages and stuff. So we'd like to continue making forward progress in communication with the downtown merchants and, and what their needs are, and, and how do we assist them where we can. So moving forward, the goals we have are the bond priorities. We are going to have a special work session on that coming up. And then again, once we have that, and we're working with Ed on all of the details, what does that look like? And then council will get that information back. We're going to continue to streamline processes and procedures, making sure that we're doing everything that we can as efficiently as we can to spend our time doing the boots-on-the-ground work. Continuing work, continuing to fill buildings, economic development downtown, working with Mark to try and get as many things as we can following, get that vibrancy downtown that we would like, that we'd all like. And then continue to be responsive and increase those communications to downtown businesses. So those are the, what we've been working on, where we're going. I hope that fits council's vision, but it's, it looks, I think the DDA and council have been really streamlined in moving forward and making those decisions that just make this a great place to work and live.
Well, I did watch the, the latest DDA meeting that was held on July 14th. I think I watched it three times. And I was very impressed with your interaction with the group and, and everything that was going on as well.
Thank you, mayor.
Good, good job. I mean, I, I felt like the DDA is, is on the right track and, and that they're working through, they have issues, of course, like every other commission does, but they seem to be working well together. So that's good.
Thank you very much.
Christine, could we get a copy of your newsletter? We put them out three times a year.
Yeah, we've only put one out so far, but absolutely, you should have been on the mailing list, but I can send another copy to you tomorrow. Did anyone else not receive that? Or would you like me to send a new copy to all of the council?
I don't believe I've seen it.
Okay. I will put it on, have it tomorrow. Any other questions or things for me? All right. Well, thank you for all of your support on all of these initiatives.
Thank you. I think now we're at concerns and comments from citizens. Please step forward. State your name and address.
My name is Diane Mapp, and I live at 318 River Street. And I'm here to talk about the Riverwalk and my concerns about the Riverwalk. I've written at Bradford a couple times. And what was stated is that the Riverwalk is an important asset to the community. But what I see are actions that don't match this. And when we have a group of volunteers who are out power washing and spending countless hours on this Riverwalk that should be maintained by the DPW, it just doesn't add up. So this is a problem. And I still feel that there's a problem, you should have a solution. So I have a solution that I think, that's workable. I propose that we give it to a private contractor, that we list specific tasks that we want them to do for the upkeep and beautification of the Riverwalk. And the thing is, is the last time I was at the council meeting, the DPW said they don't have the resources. They don't have the resources to keep up with what the residents of Manistee want. So why would we continue to do the same thing and expect a different result? It won't work. So I, I really don't understand why we can't put some money towards a private contractor, put a bit out. If he doesn't do the job, then he's not hired again. You know? I mean, we can put specific things that we want done, like trimming. I mean, really base, pulling weeds. You know, Kelly and the volunteers have been down there, and the equipment that she gets from the department, it doesn't even work. it doesn't even work. We, we donated a power washer and Grand River donated so we could clean up the concrete because it looks terrible. And I went back over some council minutes and according to council priorities, the River Walk was supposed to be spruced up before major holidays, like that being Memorial Day, July 4th and Labor Day. I was out on July 21 and I was working on the stairwell next to Dick's Barbershop. That wasn't spruced up. It wasn't, there was weeds growing everywhere and I'm sure Kelly could tell you endless things about what wasn't spruced up. So, it's apparent that they don't have the resources. So, I feel like this is a really valid solution and I, I just think that we had one in the past from what my understanding is, that there was a private contractor in the past. Jason Thompson came, was a name that was passed on to me that was a private contractor and Brian someone. So, and what I heard is when it was under the private contractor, it looked beautiful. And because it was, someone was accountable for that. They had to be accountable and if they weren't, then we weren't going to, I'm sure, hire them again. So, I, I just, I just feel there's, it's been more than 10 years since the DPW has had it. And it's plenty of time to, to do the work and get it done and it's not being done and he stated last council, he doesn't have the resources. So, again, I don't understand why we're continuing to say that things are going to get done when the resources, I mean, they don't even have power washers to, that work, that can do that work. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you. I made you five minutes, thanks. Comments are limited to five minutes. Do we have another comment?
My name is Dell Mapp, I live at 318 River Street. I'll, I'll keep it pretty short. I was a professional contractor for 30 years and if I went to any one of you people and said, "I'm going to build you a deck and I'm going to charge you $25,000 for it," and I didn't perform, you'd fire me. So, I don't understand, I'm going to reiterate the fact that I don't understand why you're taking money out of the budget, the DDA, and paying when openly admittedly, he doesn't have the manpower. I think the DDA does, is doing a great job. I think all the stuff that you guys are doing is, is phenomenal. But, you know, Mr. McCullough said he doesn't have the manpower. He just doesn't have it. So, we need somebody that has it and can do it and be accountable for it. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Do I need to state my name?
Please.
Okay. My name is David Hoeflinger, I live at 930 Tamarack Street. I'm here, I've lived in Manistee about three years, four years, and I've owned a house for two years in Manistee and I've paid almost $10,000 in taxes. I have a modest home, I have five kids. So, you know, I'm, I'm basically here to issue a challenge to this body. First of all, I thank you for all that you do. I know that you wouldn't be here if you didn't care about Manistee, if you didn't care about what was best for Manistee. But I'm, I'm asking the question, who is the city of Manistee? It is not the city of Manistee government, it is the people of Manistee, right? I think you'd agree with that. But the exorbitant tax burden in Manistee is taking away opportunities from my kids, from other kids, from this community. You know, that's like 10% of my income every year. I don't make a lot of money, but when the city taxes people, you're taking away their property. So, that's a serious thing to me. So, that's something that someone earned and then you take it away and you say, "Okay, you need to give us your property and then we're going to manage that property for you and we're going to look out for your best interest with your property. So, you need to trust us and we entrust you with that money and those resources." So, I know you do your best to do that, but sometimes we, we look at a mosaic like a big picture and we just kind of look at this one tile. Okay, how can we make, you know, the beach or the, the, the River Walk better instead of looking at the big picture, I think? I'm losing my spot. But I guess the role of the government is to protect. So, you just took the oath and you said, "I'm going to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America." Well, the role of the government is to protect, first of all, our liberty and our property. That's really the biggest role of government. So, when you take my property, you also take away my choice and that is my liberty, my ability to choose how I would spend my money. And then you decide how you would spend my money in my interests or what you might think is my best interest or my children's best interest. So, I'm just challenging you to take that very, very seriously. As we heard from Echo earlier and as many of you know, affordable housing in Manistee is a huge problem, right? It's on your website. The number one contributing factor to affordable housing not being available is the taxation rate in Manistee. If my house is completely paid off, between my water bill and my taxes, I'm still paying over $500 a month. That's with no mortgage. So, you put that now on a landlord who has a rental property and he's paying non-homestead taxes. He does not, out of the goodness of his heart, pay those taxes. Those are handed down to the renter. That makes renting very expensive. I got a great deal when I first moved here to move my family into a rental for $1,000 a month. That was a great deal. Terrible brick house, our, our heat was $600 in January, okay? People can't afford to live like that, so.
I want to tell you that your five minutes is up and I really want to thank you for your comments.
Could I just, could I have one more minute?
10 seconds, 15.
So, reducing taxes is the easiest way to protect people's liberty, to give relief to struggling people, to stimulate the local economy. Lowering taxes is the easiest way to help people who are struggling. We need that more today after the last two years, more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Chris Schultz, I live at 502 Second Street here in Manistee. I would just like to say that I agree with what the other concerned citizens have said today. On the issue of our public works, I'm not sure if it's the same as the city garage or not, but I can tell you on numerous occasions, I have observed six people mowing a lawn that should take one guy being paid maybe 40, 50 bucks to do. I've seen six government workers on that lawn. And other lawns, they go weeks, even, even up to a month. The government, the city does not touch them at all. I think the manpower has sometimes been misdirected. Too many people working on one thing, not enough people working on another. And I think somebody needs to get a handle on that. They need to figure out what's, what's going on, why, why is that disconnect? I would also like to agree with Dave. Taxes are a bit high in town. From what I understand, some people are paying an arm and a leg and yeah, that affects real estate and, you know, the cost of living. And I would appreciate if the council would find some way to lower those costs. I understand we have a budget, we have expenses and everything, but we got, we got a lot of problems paying for work, it seems, that isn't up to standard. I mean, you have the roads put in, a few years later, they're crumbling and this is something I don't understand for the life of me. Numerous times, I've seen the roads torn up, new roads put in place, one or two years later, they're tearing those roads up again because the old pipes we have, what are they, 70, 80 years old? They burst, they dig them out of the ground, they do all that work, then they put the road back on top, so they pay for that twice. I'm wondering, are we just, are we just broke? Do we have to string things along as best we, we can? Or can we think about the long term more with our infrastructure? You know, what, what are the people after this council going to deal with 5, 10, 20 years from now? Can we try to extend our vision a little further with that? I'm sure you guys are trying, but I know times are hard, there's a lot of problems, but that, that's a factor in the long run. Because it seems like we just, we get so focused on quarterly, you know, this month, that month. We're not thinking about the next five years. And yeah, I, I would really appreciate if the council would take these things into consideration and just try to be a little more efficient there. And by the way, the River Walk still has graffiti problem. Spray paint everywhere, I see a lot of stuff spray painted on the side of the bridge, on, there's a couple walls, they got Freemasons symbols, there's all kinds of profanity and stuff. It's, it's, it's pretty bad. I, I don't know why no one cleans that up, okay? And I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you and tell you about my concerns. Oh, yeah, and probably should tell the city manager about this. Your predecessor, I used to tell about, you know that road with the retaining wall on the sidewalk going up to the library from the lake? I think it's Pines Street, I, I have to see a map. Maybe I can talk to you after this. That retaining wall is crumbling. I, I think it's in pretty bad shape, there's a lot of dirt coming through and there's kind of a slow motion landslide happening there. I think one of these days, you're going to break up and there's going to be dirt in the street. So, I, I hope that can be fixed too. And the storm drains too. Storm drains aren't being cleaned out properly, they're getting clogged up in my neighborhood. I go out there once in a while and I clean them out with a rake, but I thought that was supposed to be the job of the city, but nobody seems to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Okay, have a good day, thank you.
Anyone else? Just been hearing none, city's staff?
I don't have anything, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Saylor?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Heather Paffley?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Oh, boy. Sean Milton, is that you in the back? Do you have anything?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Josh McCullough, do you have anything?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Oh, boy, I'm going to have to stand up. Mark Cameron, do you have anything?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Chief Glass, how about you?
Thank you.
City engineer, Matt Christian.
A city engineer? I think, I thought I got you.
You got me.
Yeah, I got him already. Called him off my name. All right, am I just anybody? This is, I'm going to start with Ms. Erin.
Just congratulations to Linda.
Thank you.
Kind of brings me back, I was appointed back, what, five years ago, so. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Bachmann?
Congratulations on your AR appointment, congratulations on Cindy on yours. Good luck to both of you, it's a lot of work and I know you'll do well. I have a couple questions for the chief, Glass, please, Josh? Josh, in the bud, you have a project for accreditation that's budgeted this year. I'm curious what your timeline is for accreditation and who your accreditation manager is.
So, we purchased a software, Power DMS, to help us with accreditation. We purchased that in July. Our timeframe is, we want to apply for accreditation by October 1st and when you apply for accreditation, the clock starts and that you have three years to become accredited. If you're not accredited in that timeframe, you have to apply for an extension. So, that's our, that's our timeline.
For three years? And who's, who's going to manage that for you?
So, my accreditation manager is Kirsten Gutsby, our detective sergeant. Our accreditation team is the three sergeants, myself and officer. So, we have a five-person accreditation team.
And when you apply for accreditation, do you have a fixed cost for when they come and assess this department, see if you're accreditable?
There's an upfront cost, which is about $15,000 and after the first year, that number goes down to $500 or $600 every year after that.
But you'll re-budget for this as necessary to make this work?
It's all budgeted, it's all been approved by council.
For three years?
Not for three years, but for this upcoming year.
During your current budget year?
Yeah, the initial.
Got you, okay. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Good luck with that.
Mr. Grabowski?
Yes. Jeff, could I ask you a few questions on some of these streets? I've been up on Poplar and First, Eighth and Tamarack, Princeton and 14th, they're all been opened up and it's got gravel on. And some of the guys were up there sweeping today around and put the gravel back in. There's going to be some paving done on these streets.
Yeah, I've had a couple, I've had some citizens ask and one or two council people. So, there's a mixture of those and I, I can't say positively on your list, but a lot of those are private work that's being done. So, you have to understand that the water mains, the sewer mains are all the city's. The water services from the main to the curb stop, which is outside of the roadway, is the city's. The lateral from the building to the sewer main is private. So, a lot of times when the private property owners have issues with their sewer lateral, they will contract to have that road opened up and repaired. When they do that, the city requires them to fill out a form and put down a $1,000 deposit. They are responsible for repairing and replacing that back to the way it was. Oftentimes, everything gets done except for the paving portion of it. So, what we do when that happens is we will add it to our patch list because we open up roads all the time to do repairs. And then typically in the fall, we get a contractor that comes in and paves all those patches. When it's done on a private party, we will calculate how much the cost to pave that is and subtract that from the $1,000 deposit and then the clerk's office will refund the difference. And if it's more than the $1,000, then we also will bill them for the difference.
So, we got to wait a couple months yet to get like Tamarack because I mean, you're bouncing right over these.
Yeah, so, as, as the guys notice that they're getting bad or as citizens, you know, let us, usually they call in as soon as they get any type of disrepair, then we'll go and grade them and re-gravel them. What we have found is we pay probably three to four times more for the asphalt that goes in these patches than we do when we're paving a street. So, we try to loop, you know, group them together the best we can and we do it at one time and we try to get all the way through the summer so that it can be done at one time.
Okay, have you noticed on the new road on 12th Street, you can hump up there?
I sure have.
People are complaining about it bouncing over that.
Yeah, so, actually, one of the police officers alerted it to me late last week. I went up and looked at it that evening. It appears that the telephone company took a, went from a pedestal on one side of the street to a pedestal on the other side of the street and bored a new line underneath the road. I haven't been able to, to open it up to see what they did, but, but somehow that line they put in reflected up through the gravel and through the pavement and there is a straight perpendicular bump on 12th Street up by church buildings.
Bull Street on the south side and then it stopped at the box at 12th Cypress. But I didn't know they went underneath.
This one was perpendicular and if you look, you can see the fresh soil and everything. It happened on 7th Street. I remember it was in front of Sandsted's house because they called me about that one and right between Sandsted and Mosier's house. And same thing happened, they bored in a cable. That one, we had, actually had a saw cut and then crack seal it back in. This one, I'm not sure, I'm going to try to track down the telephone company and whoever their contractor was to do a repair.
No, since the state backed out twice on us on Memorial Drive, I mean, they cut, you said they cut you down. Are we going to do anything with this thing? I mean, it's.
It, it is still in our plans for next year. We're, I'm kind of letting, giving the state some time to readdress their budgeting or their designs or whatever to get, get their money in line. But we haven't given up on that, that's still on our plans for next year.
Well, you know, it's really a mess for visitors and everybody, it's terrible.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not, there's nothing new to you. Just putting cold patch in, it's not enough. That, that needs a new base and needs to be rebuilt.
Thank you, thanks.
Council members, I got to quit, whoa, I got a question. I was trying to catch you before you left. Okay, so.
Okay, so, I, I don't really know how your department works, if you can move people around to do certain jobs, like, we need to get the, the Riverwalk and everything that needs to be cleaned up, we need to, we need to figure out some kind of plan so we're not having the same conversation the next meeting. I don't know what you need to get that done, but, I'm trying to help, because you look really bad right now, like, everything is falling on you, so I don't know if there's a way that you can move people around in your department to go down to the Riverwalk. I mean, even if they work on it for two days, that's better than avoiding the situation and, and carrying it over to the next month.
Right.
It's gonna be winter time, and then come spring, we're dealing with the same thing again.
So, we've had that covered, I'm the city manager, interim city manager, and I, we've had extensive discussions on that. I think you were surprised at, when you looked at what our numbers are. We have two people that are, like I've explained, that are in the Parks Department, and then we supplement that with seasonal help. What we've done this year is, we were fortunate, and one of our seasonal applicants is a former landscaper, looking for full-time work, but, um, has been on board with us. So, we paired him up with, um, another young man, and they have been doing all the work in the DDA. And what we have started with in the, in the beginning of the season, was getting it ready, per the DDA's agreement with us, and then also, the DDA Design Committee walked the entire Riverwalk and then River Street with us early this year. I think, Ed, didn't you send that list to them? So, we, we made a list of all of their requests and, and concerns, and I would say, at least eighty, ninety percent of those have been completed. But we do keep those two individuals down in that area and working, uh, almost entirely. We did, Ed asked, you know, geez, can we shift somebody from the Street Department into the Parks to assist there? I have ten people in the Street Department, six of those are dedicated to the bridges through the summer, so that leaves me with four. So there's not a whole lot of, of people to move around, but I will tell you that we have always crossed, used those staff to help clean the beaches. If we get a, wind that blows tonight out of the west, there's sand everywhere, we have to use those street guys down there to help us move that sand and stuff, so...
Oh, if you can't, if you can't, um, find people to do the seasonal work, like, people to hire, would it be beneficial to hire a landscaper to, to take on some of that?
Yeah, I'm, and I'm all for that. The DDA did that for five, six years, and found that, um, the more they press their contractor, the more the...
That's actually cheaper than hiring a seasonal worker, isn't it? Just hire a landscaper.
Their numbers went from, began at, I think, seventeen, eighteen thousand, and when they got up to twenty-four thousand, they decided that they could not afford the services that they were requesting, so they came back to the city probably five years ago, and then asked the city to take it back over. And so what we did, it was hired two additional summer staff, uh, to assist us with doing that, that Riverwalk, but that, that's still, those base levels of, of work are still not at the level that all of us are talking about and that the community is talking about.
Did your two summer employees exhaust all the money the DDA gave you, or did you have a savings there?
We don't, we don't track it that way. So, um, I know that Mickey, uh, assigns them mostly to the downtown area, I won't say that they're not off doing other things at other times, but, um, yeah, I, we don't track what the, what the exact time is on those.
And Councilmember Bachmann, just to be clear, the contract with the DDA doesn't just cover guys working on the Riverwalk, it's all the downtown parking lots, it's picking up the garbage bags, it's, it's all the maintenance that's done in the entire DDA for the whole season.
Can we look into hiring a landscaper, like, to see how much money you pay, or...
Well, we, it's on the agenda for the DDA Board Meeting next week, so we're gonna review the contract that's in place, the terms of that, the expectations, and, and we're gonna have a, what I believe will be an extensive discussion on that.
And, and I do think one thing that's going on here, which I think is a positive thing, so, so don't take this the wrong way, is I think that the, the expectations of the community have, have risen, and they've probably always been there, but maybe they haven't been voiced as much, so, so now there's more people that are taking notice, and they're wanting this maintenance at a higher level, and I think the city and the DDA can adapt to provide that level of maintenance and, and keep it how it is, but it, it takes a little bit of time to get there. So, as Jeff mentioned, we're meeting with the DDA, and that is specifically one of the topics, because, um, the agreement that was negotiated between the city and DDA took eighteen months to get there. And so, there's provisions in there to, for, for Jeff to walk through, which they've done, and I think I provided that list to council, so we need to, we need to go back and say, okay, DDA, we, we did the walkthrough with you, we've addressed these things, here are some other areas that the community has concerns on, whether it's cleaning the boards, or overgrown trimming, or whatever. How can we make this work? Is there an interest to have a landscaping, have those conversations? And then, uh, once we get to a conclusion, then we can work towards implementing that, whether it's part of the next budget cycle, or, or next spring when we get there. So we have to have those conversations.
Yeah, one of the, one of the, I think, important aspects when, when the DDA approached the city about, look, we've gone back and forth, the city has done it, we thought if we hired a contractor, we could get bigger, better, that didn't work out, it's getting too expensive, and we still didn't get the results, would the city take it back over? So, when we had those discussions, um, we, we were all pretty clear, and I, I, I think it was about four, five years ago, but, but that there was a lot of neglect and work that needed to be done, and so, the Design Committee was purposely scheduled those walkthroughs with us. And so every year, they have made a separate area a priority. There was a, a stretch of bushes, uh, behind, uh, well, between Poplar Street and Maple Street Bridge, way overgrown, I mean, they were just massive. So, some of that stuff, and, and pulling, uh, some of the overgrowth and trimming some of the trees, you know, that was one year, all the parking lots, and, and, uh, that was the thing that we did this year. So, um, there's been some big chunks that we've taken out, but, but I've explained, I will keep nibbling at that and, and taking chunks out as we can, but it can't be done all in one year. And even the, the stuff that's on the list for this year that we haven't done, will get done this year, it's just, it just takes a little bit to, to get to that. A lot of the concern that I hear is, is about the switchback next to Dick's Barber, and it is clearly way overgrown with the Japanese knot wood. So, um, we have been in almost daily contact with the Invasive Species Network, they've been in Manistee since Monday, so the last two days, uh, or three days, and they will be treating that specific area along the Riverwalk, and all the way down, any of the areas that are down to the Chamber, uh, tomorrow morning. The, Ed even reached out to, uh, the property owners of, which is the Little River Ban, of House of Flavors and the office building next to it, there's a lot in there. Uh, so they signed a separate agreement that allows, uh, the Invasive Species Network to enter their property and spray that as well, so, that's being addressed. I will caution you, I mean, this, there was a private property owner that weed-whapped some of that two, three weeks ago, it's already a foot tall, I mean, that stuff, the word, the, the term, it grows like a weed, isn't even fair to this stuff. It, it grows massive, and it grows fast. So I would expect that this treatment will have to be done repeatedly...
And just, like, dig it out of there?
It is actually illegal to cut it or to remove it.
I don't garden, my mom dug my yards.
Yeah, this, this stuff is, this stuff is so invasive, that, um, they did a little seminar for us when, when, uh, before we contracted with them the first time. If you weed-whap that, every time, one of the little pieces, can, that can reggerminate and reroot, and, uh, the rhizomes, the, the root structure is what's so hardy in those, so they actually are spraying it chemically, and if you, if you look at areas where they've treated, they've got a blue tint in the spray so that you can see that it's treated, um, but it's, gets absorbed by the roots, and it, and it could take two to three years or more to, to kill it all.
But then it won't come back, right?
Uh, it will be treated if it does come back.
Okay.
It, I don't know if anybody remembers, but Veterans Oak Grove Drive, going out towards Burger King, that was twenty feet tall, both sides, it almost looked like bull, bullfrog highway, only with Japanese knot wood on both sides, and if you drive down there today and you go really slow, you'll see probably forty little spots that they treated on Monday, so they've got ahead of that very well. They've been a very good partner for us, so...
Okay. I'm done. Thank you. Um, Mr. Shemansky?
Real quick, while you're there, you, you talked about the, the, the switchback.
Yeah.
It looks like it's also pulling away.
Yep.
Did you take it, what's gonna be the, it looks like it's washing out from underneath?
Um, we, I had some, some people inspect that. They're not positive that it's a washing out effect, like, I had somebody crawl up underneath it, so, uh, my next step is to, uh, is to go down there with Sean. We actually probably need some of that vegetation removed to be able to see clearly what's happening, uh, but that's certainly on our radar screen.
Okay, thanks. Also, uh, just a, a shout out to, uh, our city clerk, uh, your staff, and all of the volunteers for the election yesterday, so I know that that's not easy, and it was not a very large turnout, so some of our volunteers had double duty, working hard, and hardly anybody coming to see them, so, it was like the Maytag repairman for a couple of them, so, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great effort.
Well, newest council member, Leonard Bird.
I just wanna say thank you all, I'm, I'm very excited to work with you, so...
We're happy to have you. I do have a couple of things I would like to talk about, uh, I'd like to add a couple of things to the work session for next year, uh, week, uh, and that would be, obviously, I think we need to keep talking about the Riverwalk, because I personally, just as a homeowner myself, know how time-consuming it is to do that first weeding and the clearing of the flower beds in my own yard, and that's nothing compared to the Riverwalk. And these, the volunteers, Manistee Proud, has done a tremendous job doing the heaviest part of the labor in preparing those beds. What I don't see happening, and what I would like to see happening, or hear more about, is the DPW workers actually patrolling that area and going down there, because once you do that first major weeding, um, you have to keep after it. You had, I mean, you have to walk it, every couple of days, I'm pulling a couple of new weeds up, but it, it's so much easier if you go down there on a regular basis and you spend a little time. And I do, I, I have a feeling that if we had a landscaper come in here and start that process, and then they just maintained it on a regular schedule a few times a week, it would be much easier to manage. So I would like to talk about maybe doing something like that at the work session, and of course, um, talk about a moratorium in our ordinances, and see if it's practical. Uh, I know other, other kinds of groups do that, um, so it's worth talking about at least. So those are the two things I'd like to add.
For Councilmember Beaton, just to be clear, you wanna explore a moratorium on appointments to city boards and commissions after somebody has been on city council, specifically, or...
At, I think the city manager's job is the highest point, um, that I'm, that if...
Well, the reason I ask is I'm gonna need George to weigh in on that, because he's gonna have to research what the legality is on that, so...
Well, let's weigh in on it, have George take a look at it.
So I'm thinking it might be possibly premature to have it at the next work session, but we can certainly have George look that up and, and get some information to council, and maybe get it on the next work session?
That would be fine. Thank you, everybody. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I guess we're adjourned.